...in concrete or steel sleeves, adding the words installed and buried to the then existing and applicable building codes, going further down, striking, "Nothing set forth herein shall be construed to permit the use of the aforementioned land for any other purpose other than the burial and maintenance of utility lines invisible from the surface land."
Second.
That's not, that's adding.
You're not striking.
Strictly in the heaven line.
There's no line through it.
It's adding.
Adding.
Adding, thank you, thank you, yeah, I was thinking, what am I doing?
Mr. Perk.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Snyder.
Are we are continuing discussion?
Yes, if it's free, please.
Okay, so, ignoring legalities and whatnot, now we get back into the part, and I know you don't want to hear this, and I don't understand why, but we had seven people out of nine tonight speak up in favor of the trails system, which includes do not vacate pleas, and for all their various reasons. The way the city is set up, and the way the trails are working, it's a very slow process, because it's all being done by volunteer work. There is very, very, very little teeny bit of actual money being spent, most of it's grant and volunteer sweat and blood to do the trails. Yes, they're gonna take time. They have a master plan that still has to have little kinks worked out.
Point of order, point of order.
And therefore...
This discussion would have been germane to vacating from parks to the city, and we have been through that process already.
No, in regards to vacating, period.
Let him finish.
Parks doesn't own it, it's not part of the trail system.
We are now in, in the process of vacating this street, and we have a motion to amend, and that conversation about trails is not germane to what motion is before us right now.
Yes, it is, because we're talking vacation.
This ordinance doesn't have anything to do with trails.
No, it has to do with vacation.
That's my understanding, is that correct, Mr. Weaver?
It has nothing to do with trails, but it has to do with disposing of city property.
I understand that, so I'm, I'm just trying to break down his point of order to the discussion that's before us now, which is the reason for the point of order, and, and he cited the, the trails issue. I, I can't read anything in here about the trails. Now, if, if this wants to be a, a separate argument, then I guess it'll have to be...
Give me two more seconds, and I'll get it into the vacation of city land.
Okay, two seconds.
Okay.
Time's up.
Right.
Go ahead.
Okay, it's been pointed out, the more land we vacate, the less we can do with what we would like to do in the future. We are vacating land. We are looking at a brand-new section of stuff, that as our own city attorney has pointed out, we haven't a clue what that's gonna entail. As long as this is taken, I hate saying, let's delay it longer, but I'm asking yet again, for the zillionth time, take time to look at it, get it worked out. This garbage about waiting until it's done reading, and then they'll go back and fix, or we still have another couple of weeks, is silly. Do it right the first time. Get the attorneys together, tell them to get their acts together, get this done in regards to what our city attorney was specifying, and in the meantime, think about, we are constantly giving up land, we have got to quit doing it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Perk, go on.
I'd like to address Ms. Snyder's comments. Uh, Ms. Snyder, I think we have asked, and we have gotten some compromise and some movement to come together, by having everybody here at this table, and both parties in this issue, work together, and we've come a long way. It's been a long, hard process.
Exactly.
So, this kind of good positive movement, uh, the issues of connectability all aside, I, I'm not really sure about all that there, but this, this basically just vacates that portion of this city property. It provo, there were no other objectors to this, other than Parks, who now does not have a voice in it, because it has been removed from their purview. It is now the city's purview, it is at this table. So, we have the authority. Do we have the volition? And we shall see at the vote.
Yes, ma'am.
It was removed from Parks, and in the process of being vacated, against our own city attorney's advice, and against two people saying, no, we've got to pay attention to what we're being told.
Call the question, please.
Mr. Weaver.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell, did you mean to strike or to add these words at the end of this code?
Add.
Add?
Nothing set forth?
I think, no, at the end of, right above the legal description.
Pursuant to, or, 'cause I meant to add, did I say strike?
I think you said strike. I want to make sure that that's certainly, for legal purposes, that really has gotta be in there.
Anything highlighted was added, I, yeah, thank you for catching.
I, I may have been wrong, but I wanted to make sure. No, you were probably right, you were probably right.
Okay, question's been called, anybody else? Okay, question's been called for. This is a suspension of the rules, is my understanding.
There was nothing about suspending the rules.
This is the amend.
The misnumbered 2211 as follows, et cetera.
Okay, this does have to be a roll call, so, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four-two.
Four-two.
Okay.
Now, did we, that was officially ordinance number 2213.
It is now 2213.
Yes, and that was for the amended version of 2213.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, any further on this one, Mr. DeVito?
Would...
Suspend the rules.
Move to suspend, look, we voted on the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, move to suspend the rules, and place ordinance number 2211.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
It's now fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2213. And I don't have to say amended, do I? Because it's a whole different number, uh, on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
Question.
Yes, sir.
If it has, if it has a whole new number, is it not a different ordinance? Does it not need to go back and be read, and have a first reading?
If it truly is a different ordinance, it does need a new number, and it does need a new reading. Now, the reality of the way I understand it, is it's simply got a misnumbered number. And so that part of the amendment is really not changing the ordinance itself.
What about these other changes?
The others is up to the council to decide whether those are significant issues that need a new number and a new ordinance, or whether they're simply amendments that fall within the original work of the ordinance, which is typically what's done at the table.
Mr. Mitchell.
So, if we just made a motion, and it got a second to read it with the new number, then obviously the majority of council said that it was not materially changed.
That we would know.
This is a lot of material change.
For all the citizens.
Yeah, I noticed.
Stand by.
Ready?
No.
Mr. Perkepile.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
No.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Four-two. Ordinance 2213, an ordinance vacating an unnamed, unopened street located between blocks one and two of the Magnetic Base Survey, as plotted on the Riley and Armstrong plot of 1893 Carroll County, Arkansas.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2213 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Four-two.
Motion to take a five-minute recess.
Ten minutes.
Five-minute recess.
Second.
Yeah, five-minute recess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. We'll be back here at ten or fifteen, too. City council will be back in session. We were about to embark upon number four, ordinance 2112, with second read. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open.
2212.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2212 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by. Roll call, though.
Thank you.
No. No.
Is that a copy?
Need this?
There's an engagement from the terms.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Perkepile.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McClung.
Yeah.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Ordinance 2212, an ordinance for the purchase and installation of water meters for the public water system of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2212 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
So shall it be. We want a third reading on last night?
Uh, somebody makes a motion that they have suspended the rule.
Do we want it? Does it matter?
It's up to y'all.
Does it matter?
Does it matter? Ask Mr. Weaver, does it matter if this is approved?
No, I mean, aren't they like, in a rush to get this approved, to get their money?
The sooner it's appropriated, the sooner we can get cranking. Yes, or Mr. Weaver?
Uh, move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2212 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Perkepile.
Yes.
Six-zero.
Okay. Thank you.
When in doubt, say yes.
Okay.
Well, but...
Brings us to new business.
What about this?
They, oh...
I'm training for July, never mind.
Okay, 'cause we postponed five and six under oath.
Yep.
They're unfinished. So, moves us to number one, which is an appeal regarding new construction review denial of 101 North Main, DPH Property LLC. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open. Mr. Mitchell.
I would assume we need to hear from somebody from the Crescent Park, so we might as well let Mr. Moyer, who's just burst through that door, speak. There's a clue there, no, I'm teasing. I, I think we need to hear from him first.
Go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, thank you for your time. I have also forwarded these comments to you, but I thought I would read them into the record. As you know, we are looking to, we, meaning the Basin Park Hotel, have asked to construct a nine-foot-deep covered parking shell to house motorcycles, providing a covered, safe, and secure overnight parking area. This application has been reviewed by the HDC and has been approved. In review of code and zoning, we agree with the city attorney, when he shared with the planning commission, that parking is an accepted use in C1. This structure is located on Highway 23, it's in C1 zoning, and we also agree with the opinion that there is no shared restriction on whether parking should be covered or uncovered. What I'd like to share with council is that this area is already designated, the, the specific area that we're referring to is already designated for parking for motorcycles in this existing parking lot. It was only through feedback of our guests, just back, backing up our timeline a little bit, we have offered covered parking for motorcycles since 2007. I brought a couple of examples, both to share you, uh...
It was not true by time.
Share with you the documentation of the covered parking, I just passed that along. And I also wanted to share with you where this actual motorcycle garage would sit. The area that's highlighted is the parking lot, known on Main Street as the horse's carriage for years. It's been a parking lot for over twenty years, and the covered parking structure would be located where it sits in red, right there. The area that's the smaller box in red is the existing parking house. So you'd see that it would be located directly behind the parking house. It's nine foot deep, and it would be sixty feet long. It does not have any adjacent property owners. We own the lots on each side, and the, the area behind the parking lot is vacant, it skips up quite a bit of distance, and then there is a property owner across Jackson Street that sits approximately eighteen feet higher than the ground level of the parking lot. And I'll show you that document momentarily. Again, it's important, this is, this is the area, after we lost our parking on Center and Mountain, and acquired Leopold's Parking Lot, which was in 2007, we initially developed a concept to have covered motorcycle parking on the far north section of, of the parking lot, sort of the smaller lot. We abandoned that proposal when we became discouraged with how it would affect the neighborhood. And in, at that time, that's about four or five years ago, at that time, we developed an alternative structure to park motorcycles behind the house, and that's where we've been parking motorcycles since. The shell, it's important to understand, is not intended for day use, there may be some day use to it, but this is for overnight customers, overnight parking that stay at a really important building in our town, the Basin Park Hotel. So, we understand that motorcycles travel to, to Eureka Springs, we softly market, as we market to many market segments, it is not a primary market segment for us, but it does generate travel. And the feedback that we get from our guests is they're not comfortable parking on Main Street. So, the concept that was developed, and I think has been successfully executed previously, was to have some covered parking. We executed that strategy on Center and Mountain, and we're trying to find a location that we can do the same thing for the Basin Park Hotel, in the Basin Park Hotel parking lot. I, I think it's important to keep in mind where C1 is. C1 starts at the top of Plainer Hill, and it runs to the train station, and it runs down Main Street. And I think it's also important to remember that basically eighty percent of your parking that's offered in this town is in C1. There's already parking there on C1, there's already motorcycle parking that's designated specifically in C1, and we encourage you to consider, take that into consideration. I also wanted to share with you, you know, I heard that this is a first covered parking garage, and obviously, that's probably not the case. Today, I'll share with you, and this took me about two seconds, here's eight structures that are on Main Street, that are covered parking, that are already constructed, some newly constructed, and I would remind you that you approved, not, not this, this body, the planning commission approved the under the Ozarks covered motorcycle parking just last year. The zoning we've mentioned is C1. This request from the Basin Park really is that we would hope to have the same property rights, and really, this is, I believe, a property rights issue. It's a C1 zone, motorcycles already are allowed to park there, it's on a state highway, Highway 23. Where the motorcycles are currently being parked is exactly where the garage will be. Now, we have a lot of respects and appreciation for our neighbors, we've, we've worked with many of our neighbors. I did want to share with you a couple of documents. Most importantly is probably this document. It'll show you where the, where the motorcycles park. You'll see this fancy scale, I'm sure I'm offending an architect somewhere, or at least a surveyor, but that gentleman is six foot two, he didn't know that I would copy him and paste him two times. That wall is six foot tall, the wall behind them is six foot tall, and the, the property line, where the house behind the property is built, is clearly eighteen foot, six inches above the ground level where the motorcycles will be parked. Okay? So I'll pass those around. It's also important to note, you, you can see the Jackson Street level, this is, again, the house is across the street from Jackson Street, and you note that the second section is all vacant land, so there's not multiple houses behind the parking structure. There is one house that is eighteen foot, six inches above the parking structure across Jackson Street. I'll share with you that. You know, I, I would like to apologize to Chairman James Morris for the planning commission. I share with you some of the concerns that, that we, we opted not to go to, to planning in lieu of coming directly to council. We, we felt as though it was, it was appropriate, and I've sent those, those reasons forward. And, you know, I think the thing that, that we want to understand and share is, we get that motorcycle noise is a challenge. We understand, and, and in fact, what we, what we believe is motorcycle travel is not aggressively marketed to Eureka Springs for that reason. But motorcycles come here. Highway 23 is the pig trail. The pig trail was picked by National Geographic as one of the top five, five rides in the country. And I think what I would encourage this council to do on all issues relating to motorcycles is, understand that this organic market can be coached to lessen the effect on our residents. And that's exactly what we plan on doing here. Our goal is to accommodate our guests. We listen to our guests, and we move our product to where our guests are at. But ultimately, we want folks that travel here on motorcycles, out of their motorcycles, so that they're overnighting on Spring Street, and not cruising Spring Street. That's our goal, and this is our solution to that.
Mr. McClung.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Jack. Two things, it looks like with a seven-foot apron, and almost, they're almost large enough, I guess, to convert to autos, if that need should ever arise, I mean, that's, I mean, you're, you're doing a, a seven-foot, uh, concrete...
Pad, the additional concrete.
Apron in front, so, I mean, that still only gets you to around sixteen feet, so it's a little bit short, but...
It ties, if, if you can envision the existing concrete pad that's in place, that sixteen feet takes you to the curb, that's the area that is not in concrete currently. So when you do that seven foot and that nine foot, the, the nine-foot structure and the additional seven-foot concrete, you will have a full concrete pad that goes from curb to curb.
Okay, now, my second, my second thing is, is that you addressed that also, because I, it, it does, it, it takes those bikes off the street, and I assume you're gonna valet to those customers, where they, they go and park their bike, and then you ride them back up to the hotel, and...
Well, we provide a shuttle, but our shuttle is very restricted, we run property, property, and, and parking lot to property, uh, so...
Yeah, but I, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
So, so yes, like all of our guests, they'll, they'll park there, again, this is intended for overnight traffic.
Right.
They will park, lock, and they'll be picked up with the shuttle, and they'll be dropped into downtown.
Yeah, so that's, that effectively does take their bikes off the street, gives them secure parking, and, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Two questions, and a comment first, this is an excellent packet, excellent presentation, as are the last pictures with, with the measurements. You mentioned earlier that in 2007, you looked at a parking on the far north end, but you didn't go through with that, and you said something about because of the neighbors or the neighbor, and, and working with them, what happened to that garage back in '07?
Well...
And why did you not?
I, I wouldn't say I necessarily said that.
Okay.
Okay, but what I did say is, we put that on the shelf.
Yes.
Quite honestly, just, just to be honest, I mean, I, I think we've had some trouble with the planning commission, okay? I, I think we might want to visit that tape, especially when individuals on the planning commission are accusing backroom door deals being done. So, long story short is, I, I challenged that person to produce that proof, and if not, I, I challenge him to look at a different solution. With that said, your question, we were uncomfortable putting the bike garage in that location, because it was adjacent to a property that we did not own. That's number one.
Okay.
Number two is, the planning commission came back to us and said, we've got a solution to this project, if you make the following improvements, and they gave me a list, and for a nineteen thousand dollar parking garage, they provided me a list of over two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars in improvements.
Okay.
And at that point, we just didn't really feel like we should move forward.
Then my second part of that question, then I'll, I'll wrap it right here, real quick.
Sorry.
I guess my concern is, and it kind of bothers me that we have five, I think there were five citizens on planning, who pretty well were concerned enough to say no. And, and I'm wrestling with, and I totally understand where you're coming from, marketing, the business aspect, I've got all of that. But I'm, I'm also concerned about five citizens on planning who legitimately, in their view, felt strong enough to deny it. And I'm almost concerned enough about that to be in my mind, thinking that this issue should go back to planning with some more legal counsel to help them ripen their decision a little bit better, and that's kind of where I'm leaning.
I, I guess I would question whether that would be appropriate in this particular scenario. Most specifically, your legal counsel gave an opinion that was ignored at the table, and in fact, in lieu of building an atomic nuclear power plant at the area. So, I'm sorry, I don't know where the bias sits, the last time you heard an appeal was probably with me, or with the hotel also, but I'm afraid we cannot get a fair hearing at the planning commission, so we consciously skipped the planning commission to come to the city council.
Mr. Perk.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Moyer.
Yes, sir.
This is a parking lot.
True. That is correct.
That's an approved use.
That's correct.
At C1. You have motorcycles currently parking in this parking lot, correct?
In that parking lot, in that location.
Okay. Now, what this, and I'm just dealing with this from...
But I'm also concerned about five citizens on planning who legitimately, in their view, felt strong enough to deny it. And I'm almost concerned enough about that to be in my mind thinking that this issue should go back to planning with some more legal counsel to help them ripen their decision a little bit better, and that's kind of where I'm leaning.
I guess I would question whether that would be appropriate in this particular scenario. Most specifically, your legal counsel gave an opinion that was ignored at the table, and in fact, in lieu of building an atomic nuclear power plant at the area. So, I'm sorry. I don't know where the bias sits. The last time you heard an appeal was probably with me or with the hotel also. But I'm afraid we cannot get a fair hearing at the Planning Commission. So we consciously skipped the Planning Commission to come to the City Council.
Mr. Perk.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
This is a parking lot.
True. That is correct.
That's an approved use.
That's correct.
In C1. You have motorcycles currently parking in this parking lot, correct?
In that parking lot, in that location.
Okay. Now, what this, and I'm just dealing with this from sort of a convenience and acoustical standpoint, what this does would be to shelter these bikes. They're not going to come skidding in here. I mean, they're going to have to either back them up, where they're not running their bike, you know?
Yeah.
You've got to push them back in there so they can drive out. This also helps to sort of deflect the sound back to 23, to the highway.
I guess.
I noticed that there are some port windows there.
Yeah.
On the back. But basically, the objections that I heard from the people living up above and behind this area was that it would be noisier, and this tends to dampen and baffle that, is what I'm seeing. I mean, that's just my first thought there. I, you know, I have no objection to it. I think it's an appropriate use. It's a parking lot. I went by today, and I looked at the motorcycle garage, you know, over there at End of the Ozarks. Looked perfectly fine. It's a different location, but it looked perfectly fine. It's gated. It's, you know, one of the concerns was, well, we don't want guys at two o'clock in the morning revving their bikes up and, you know, hauling around. Well, there's probably some of that that goes on, but it's probably not the guys that are going to be parking their bikes in this place, because it's got to be a gated area. You've got to unlock the gate, you know? So, I don't have any objection to it. I think it's perfectly fine.
Well, I think in answer to that question, at the End of the Ozarks, the people who own the bikes are right there. They're living right there with the bike, so they can get to it. If with the, if they're staying at the Basin Park, they've got to have a ride down to there.
They've got a ride, they've got a shuttle.
Yeah, I know. But it's different than if you're sleeping right outside your bike. You, you know, you're not about to get up and, two o'clock in the morning at the Basin Park and get a shuttle ride, and, you know, it's a different situation. Anyhow, never mind, that's not the point I was going to make. The objections I have heard to this have all been about the noise, and you don't visualize this as an in-and-out thing. I mean, they're not going to park there for a couple of hours, then come and pick up their bike and go somewhere else. This is a different thing. They're going to be there, once they're there, they're there, and they're going to be there overnight.
That's our plan to use, overnight, overnight, safe and secure.
It's kind of like premium parking, is what you're saying this is.
Yep.
Would, does this give the bike owner more of a measure of security, feeling more secure because it's covered, or it's not gated or something, but it's?
It is gated.
Oh, it's going to be gated?
It will be gated for security.
Okay.
And it will be weatherproof. I mean, those are two things that are very, very important, especially with off-site parking. We really feel, and we've heard, that security is required.
Okay. Most of the objections I have heard to this have been people who, I have to say this, but they are absolutely positively convinced that their city government is not going to enforce the noise ordinance, and there's going to be a lot of noise here. I think the problem is with the noise, and that is not Jack's problem. He has the zoning. Legally, it's on his side. There is, the Planning Commission doesn't have a legal leg to stand on, and I can see on in denying this thing. But I think our main problem here is motorcycle noise that we have to deal with, and we can't deny him parking because motorcycles make noise, because that's not his problem, that's our problem. We, it's up to us to make sure that these motorcycles are not noisy. So anyhow, that's all I want to say.
Couple things. This passed the HDC.
Correct.
Along the lines of what Mr. Perkepile spoke about ameliorating the noise issue, since it is open to the front, are these vent openings at the back really necessary?
Well, Travis Holloway.
And my reason for that is because the complaints are coming from the back of the property. And if there was a way you could eliminate the vents, that's less noise that's going to come out of the garage through those vents and disturb the people from behind. And being as it's open to the front.
We could put in windows instead of vents. Right now, they look like windows, but they're just frame openings with grills on them, so they are vents, but it could be fixed with a window.
You've got to have.
I think clearly does make it, helps them, they probably think, because like you said, the bikes are already there. So we're, you know, stopping it coming out the top and down the bank, and some up the sides. It's putting more noise towards 23 because of the setup.
So what you're saying, you could put fixed pane glass in that opening and not have an open vent?
On the back windows.
On the back?
Good.
Well, I would encourage you to do that, because it would lessen the noise coming out of the back, and in that direction is where the complaints are coming from. And I agree that in an enclosed space like that, it's going to focus the noise toward 23.
Yeah. I'll just say we will go ahead and do that. We debated that anyways, right? I won, but now I've ultimately lost. But, and the other thing is, I met with one of the folks that testified at the Planning Commission. And it turned out that he was actually informed that this proposal was going to be on the original location. So he, in a sort of last-ditch effort, was thinking that it might be an adjacent situation. We talked through that today. We have a respectful business relationship. He made a suggestion that we create sort of a quiet period, a no-rev, or no-startup, or no-access. Now, that's not a perfect situation, but we talked about with him, either between 12 and 6, or 12 and 7, restricting access, so people wouldn't be able to come in and out. And I would have no problem locking non-occupied gates, so we don't have bar traffic that slides in there. Of course, you know, the bellman is the person who opens the gate.
Yeah.
So it's not like these are individual pay slots, these are overnight slots.
Could I ask you a question about that, then?
Yeah.
You can't control the noise, we understand that. We're dealing with noise over here. Enforcement of the noise ordinance goes to the police department, and if somebody calls, then it's noisy. But there is the element of communication and education of people about the noise and all. Would it be possible to put some innocuous signage, nothing that's offensive to the people about, please be considered and be quiet, or have the person that's opening the gates.
Yeah.
Also remind the people to not be, just something that goes along, that personalizes to these people that you can control.
The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Because it is a neighborhood, we get it. We picked the location because we are the adjacent property owner.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean.
I understand.
We're all big, one big world here, guys. I mean, 2,000 people live in this town.
Mr. Snyder, let's get you, you haven't been up yet.
Yeah, I've been waiting. Yeah, that was my one little night was signage. And almost all of our bikers are going to pay attention, they're going to understand they're in a residential zone, ride quietly if y'all tell them at the check-in desk and whatever. I'm sure, you know, they'll be, we have motorcycles here, they're going to be here. These guys have parked there for a million years. All we're doing is being good, polite townspeople and giving them weather coverage. Shouldn't really be a problem. You might want to consider those glass windows, though, because those can be broken.
Travis, fix them.
Up near the top, maybe, or the ceiling, but seriously.
They will be higher up.
But seriously, if you're going to go with glass, do something, you can't throw a rock through.
Yeah, I agree.
This, the space here above the gates, that is open space.
That is open space, yeah.
So it will vent, there's not a chance of somebody getting.
This is kind of one of those structures that keeps honest people out.
Yeah, but I mean, it's also going to prevent suffocation from, you know, asphyxiation.
It's open.
Yeah, so. Yeah, and as an option, Jack, really, I mean, I don't know how the elevator in the Basin Park is rated, but you might want to run them in the elevator, and then just take them to the rooms.
The bikes? That might, we all know, don't overload the elevator, right?
It's old.
It's new, it's new, but it still has a weight limit, okay?
You have a new elevator?
Well, mostly, new in our world, you know?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I understand everything, Jack, the business, I really do. The only issue I have, again, is the issue with five citizens on planning, and I understand your concern about planning. And I would certainly like to have them have the opportunity to reconsider and send to council their approval of this. It's something about overriding five citizens.
Well, I think that's why there's an appeal process, though. I mean, we were rejected, we're here at the appeal.
I was, yeah.
I understand.
Mr. DeVito.
Looking at the documentation we have here regarding the public hearing, and then the, by the chairman, Mr. Leswick, that moved to close the public hearing, Ms. Green's second, and motion carried 5-0. Mr. Leswick made a motion to announce that the Planning Commission is opposed to the project, and second, and that they voted down, second motion carried 5-0. So, you know, planning voted to turn it down. I wish planning would have given us some reasons behind why they did that, but it went to planning, and they decided 5-0 to turn it down. So I'm not sure what benefit putting it back to planning is going to accomplish. And then Mr. Moore said that's why we have an appeals process.
Further, Mr. Perkepile?
Yes, sir. 13.04.06.01, Commercial Construction Review and Approval, Number E, on page 380 in your municipal code book. City Council may, upon consideration of said appeal, approve or deny the permit by majority vote. City clerk shall notify the building official and property owner and his representative of the council's action. So there is, this appeal process is explicitly laid out in the municipal code, and we have the authority here at this table to approve or deny. So, for whatever reason, and there have been some reasons, I've been talked to, I've been called and talked to by some of the Planning Commission, and their main concern was noise. And the way I see it, this is, you know, we're attenuating, to use another word. We're attenuating that noise by putting a three-sided structure there. And I think it's only 10 spaces, 10 motorcycle spaces. I don't see it ever being used, because it's got gates on it, I don't see it ever being used for anything other than just motorcycles. Don't you have, you've got a partition, are you going to have a gated partition between each one of the bays? Okay.
And we're attempting to save the tree also, that's right in the middle of there.
So, you know, I think it appears to, it appears to be, fall within all the codes. It appears to be, provide a function. It appears that you're actually trying to accommodate your clients, and also the wishes of the local residents to reduce the noise, so.
Do we do a motion on this? Will you need it on this?
You know, and that.
It'll be a council vote.
After saying that, I would like to move to approve this permit.
Mr. Weaver, do you have?
Just a comment that might help Mr. Mitchell with his concerns. In the past, now, it's not been done recently, in the past, when the city attorney has been asked to go to the Planning Commission, there's been discussion that when they turn something down, or when they approve something, they really need to make a record and provide that. As Mr. Perkepile has read you, the code really doesn't give you the right to give it back to them and say, "Do that." For future reference, I would suggest that if they're going to turn something down or approve something, they need to put their, to make their record a little better than it appears to be what you've got in front of you. And I'm sorry, you don't have a better record. I was not there, I'm not sent to the Planning Commission, except on very rare occasions. And that is something I think they need to maybe address for future reference. But right now, I think Mr. Perkepile made the point very clear, from what our code does, it says you can approve or you can deny.
Oh, I knew the deal.
So, at this point, if you're worried about the record and not approving, you need to make your record now at this table. And I think you've all voiced very clearly, at this point, your own objections to or reasons for approval. Very clearly, which I wish had been done at the lower level.
Mr. Mitchell.
One last time, Mr. Moore. You seriously are going to do the very best you can with educating about noise for that area. The very best that y'all can do. I know you don't control it, and you can't control that idiot that goes out there, racks his pipes, but.
Number one, I've agreed we'll put a sign.
Thank you.
Number two, we've agreed that we'll put the windows in, and I will stand up for the individuals who stay with us and pay a decent sum. I'm guessing the people you're talking about are not necessarily our people. But with that said, they are driving motorcycles, and they are driving Harleys, but we will do our best, as I have stated.
Did you get a second?
I need a second.
Second!
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to.
I quietly said it before, he screamed it.
To repeal the appeal, or to.
Approve the permit.
Approve the permit.
To approve the permit.
Okay. For the North Main Parking Shelter by Basin Park Hotel, motorcycle parking shelter. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Since it is a final approval, you probably really ought to do a roll call vote.
Aye, stand by.
Oh, you're on the spot.
We'll make it official here, again.
Sure. Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Present.
Seriously? Mr. Perkepile?
Yes.
5, 0, 1.
You're the one started present.
Thank you.
When I am highly conflicted, I believe Nikki's paper said.
No question, no question.
I didn't question, I made a comment.
Please. Or didn't. No, no.
Moves us to number two, discussion of multifamily ordinance amended.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Where to go?
Let me get something. You want to ask your friend out? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jim Gurkin is outside, and he requested a little bit of our time, longtime resident here.
Yes, sir. Give some of your time?
Mr. Gurkin?
Yeah.
Take the mic, sir.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
First off, thanking you for having me here, and let me speak my piece again. I think this is about the fourth time I've appeared for either one of the various commissions or the City Council itself about this particular issue. I'm here to address this, I hope this now the ordinance dealing with multifamily dwellings in Eureka Springs. First off, I don't appear here because I like it. I'm here because I feel that as a local business owner, I'm obligated to know about ordinances that affect businesses like mine, and to have some input before the passing of such ordinances. I am not, and have never been, opposed to paying a fair and equitable business tax in this city. I paid a business tax in this city for forty years plus in another business. However, I do feel that some of the sections of this ordinance as proposed are not fair and equitable. Notably, Sections 2, 7, 8, and 9. And I'll address some of that each as quickly as I can, so I don't take up a whole lot of time. And Section 2 is the section on providing multiple units must provide off-the-street parking, as I understand that, is that correct? Or does that mean that we can, if we own a multiple unit on Spring Street, for instance, we can use the street, the curbside parking can be used? Then I submit there are facilities along that street. I don't have an own one. But I can see that there, where people in my business might, where there aren't, there all the way from, oh goodness, all the way from the post office to the Fuller House. There are places where there is no other parking, and they can provide no other parking except curbside parking. And if you've driven along there, as you all have, you know that all the traffic, all the parked cars are parked curbside. Now, there are some on one side of the street that do have parking down below, but for the most part, cars are lined up along the curbside there day and night. So it's really, that particular part has to be addressed better. And as I say, not for mine, because I don't have a. And as I say, not for mine, because I don't have a, I don't have a, what is defined as a multi-unit in that area. But it's still not fair. I own, the second thing is, I own several properties in Eureka Springs, as most of you know, or those that know me anyhow. I own several properties, rental properties in Eureka Springs. It's a half a dozen or so Holiday Island and one little house at Berryville. All of them belong to my business, one business, called Gurken Rental Properties. That is the name of my business. I only own one business. But I have several rental units in various locations. Does this, does this ordinance mean, I'm trying to get my thoughts together, does it mean that I'd be required to pay a fee for each three units that I own? Or just one reasonable fee for my business? Which I'm not opposed to paying a reasonable fee for my business. And what about duplexes and single units which aren't addressed in this ordinance? They are still businesses, in my opinion. If you own a building and you rent it, you are in business whether you like it or not. If you take money for it and you expect a return on your investment, you are in business. Whether it's a duplex, a triplex, a quadruplex, or a single unit. And I own some of all of the above. Some of them, you know, I would be exempt. And I probably shouldn't even address that, because I would be exempt from this. But, but it's still not fair. It doesn't make the ordinance fair, because you've got people in business that are paying and people in business, the same business, that aren't paying. And so, again, as long as we can make this ordinance fair and equitable to everybody that's in this business and charge a business tax for the business and not, not for, necessarily for each building. For instance, I own one particular property that has four buildings on the same property. One of the buildings has three dwelling units on it. The other three buildings are separate individual dwelling units. Is this tax to be, or tax, I call it a tax, to be business expense for each individual business? Or is it all on one property? I don't know the answer to that. It seems to me that this ordinance as written is not really, is not defined well enough for me to know. And it's not, not fair to everybody. And I think that's your goal, is to seek fairness for all of us.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, I, because the author of this ordinance is not here to answer the gentleman's questions. And it would seem appropriate that the gentleman should be at planning to discuss this. It would make sense that this be referred back to planning to hold a public hearing on or something similar.
Been there, done that.
But Mr. Leswick is not here to answer your questions, and you've stood there and asked a lot of questions of us.
No, okay, I'm sorry.
And I'm not the author of this, and I can't answer your questions. So it seems a moot point to try and go any further with this at council when, when the expert that wrote this is not here and you're asking questions of us.
Jim, what it came down to was, they did some work on numbers one, three, and six. And your concerns are with two, seven, eight, and nine. So we can't even address that, because we don't have anything. But that's one of those things you've brought up before, and it makes a lot of sense. I would really suggest that you get ahold of planning and see if you can't have this topic on their agenda to discuss it.
I never have any, how I found out about this meeting was read the paper. If I didn't read that local newspaper, I wouldn't have known to be here tonight.
Yeah, just contact one of the planning members and ask if they can do an agenda item with you.
I've appeared before planning.
Oh, not yet, give me a chance to breathe.
I've appeared before planning before with this same issue, and I don't know whether the, this ordinance was written the same or not.
Yeah, because you brought up those points before when I was on planning before.
Yeah, okay.
And the other points.
I don't know, as I say, I don't know who's on the planning commission today. It changes every time I go there, so, you know.
Well, I can answer part of your questions. That your single units, they wouldn't have a fee attached to them. Being as it's a multifamily unit, they wouldn't fall under this. If I'm reading it correctly, it's only three units or more per building. So your single units, they wouldn't fall under this at all.
That's correct, I agree with James. If you identify it only as multifamily, but I've lived here long enough to remember when we had many multifamilies living in a single-unit house. You know, unmarried individuals, fourteen of them living in a three-bedroom house. Yes, I remember that. But, and you may too, I don't know, you've been here a long time too. But I, my deal is, I'd rather my business be identified as one business.
I'd like to make a motion that we refer this issue back to planning to have the, and then have the author of this and planning make a point to visit with this gentleman. And then, when it comes back to planning, that the author of this comes to council with it.
Can we ask Steve to maybe tell us what this is about?
He's not the author.
I mean, were you?
I can speak somewhat to it. This was just brought up and the changes were made, as you said. The changes were brought up at our last meeting. And the changes are not what Mr. Gurken's talking about. But I would say, just based on what I'm hearing here, if Mr. Gurken wanted to put these in writing, we could address that at a planning commission meeting. And probably you would not have to stand and talk to us about it. You could just tell us what your concerns are, because you're pretty straightforward with what your concerns are. I don't know if you've done that.
I've never been opposed to pay a business tax during a business class.
Well, I just.
I've owned a lot of them.
But that's, that's all I can address.
Okay, well, what, the thing is, Ed gave us these and it's on sections one, three, and six, but we don't have anything to compare it to. Okay, so can we postpone it for two weeks until somebody gets clarification?
We have a motion, do we don't have a, do we have a second?
I'll second, okay.
Okay, motion and a second, need for discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't think it's ambiguous at all. It's not ambiguous at all, it's perfectly plain. Well, we don't have anything to compare it to.
Yeah, I took that out of my briefcase. This is the first meeting in a year that I haven't had that ordinance in my briefcase.
You can send a representative.
Okay, AC, he's AC.
And this, this off-the-street parking, this is not true. The people who have B and Bs downtown, they do have off-the-street parking.
Well, Jim is brought to the stuff before, he's made some very good points.
Okay. Brings us up to number three, discussion of the parking garage.
Second.
Second.
For us, Mr. Lees.
I would like to postpone this and move it to our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, moves us to number four, discussion of moped franchise.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, before you have a, a recent application from the moped guy who had just filled this out, I'm not sure when the license is issued, but this, this is his.
He should be outside waiting to come in.
Is he? Okay.
He was. He might be outside, outside.
Yeah, come in.
There he is, we found him.
Your back doors. Okay. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
My name's Philip Thomas on Blackjack Skid Row.
Mr. Thomas just recently filled this out on six, six, fourteen. I'm not sure when the license is issued, but he had been operating without a license, without a franchise. And y'all can ask him the questions on that one. It was brought to my attention by Chief Hyatt, who said he was operating without a business franchise. So this was asked to be put on here, so here it is. Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, I was part of his very first application. And when he got his franchise and stuff, it was all brand new. And since then, there's been another company, business, whatever you want to call it, similar nature, bigger vehicles, that never did anything. And I believe Mr. Thomas was not sure that he had to re-license, because this other place didn't have anything, and there's been confusion. And the other place had been brought up by a previous planning chair in regards to, well, this other guy has opened doors and hasn't come to us, and what are we doing about it? And the issue kind of got dropped, ignored, overlooked, whatever. So it's been a matter of confusion. If we have a franchise, do we have a number for how many are permitted? Do we have guidelines in regards to, his particular franchise is with the mopeds and stuff? What about other similar vehicles that might be bigger? It's just been, because this was all brand new to us, like, four years ago. It's been really confusing on what we're doing. It's like new territory to us.
What does?
Mr. Mitchell.
I need to ask the attorney a question. I didn't know we had application for moped franchises. And I have to kind of agree with Ms. Snyder, and that's a rare thing, but.
Sorry, here.
We do have one in this.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a moped franchise.
Four point two four.
And how many can we have?
Doesn't say. It just says, you know, that you have to come before this, this table here, and you have to apply for it. He's, he's brought an application for it and he's provided everything that's requested here.
And it's called mopeds.
Moped franchise, four point two four.
Is moped defined? Because what is a moped?
It's a, okay. Moped, three-wheeled vehicle or other similar vehicle. Moped, three-wheel vehicle or other similar vehicle, so it could be two or three. Means any vehicle with two or more wheels, an automatic transmission, and a motor which does not displace in excess of fifty cubic centimeters.
Thank you, now I know.
Now, that hasn't been updated then, because I know we updated to a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, we gave him, you came on a second time and asked for larger Y-haves, CCs.
Red, ordinance is back to two thousand and seven. There is no ordinance, there was apparently no follow-through. You may have discussed it. I couldn't find any council meetings, so if you could help rein in the timeframe, I'll do more research, but there's no ordinance since two thousand and seven to this year.
I was on council and I distinctly remember granting him a variance to go with a larger vehicle, because at, at that meeting, the discussion was that with two people on a moped and with the hills in Eureka, that the bikes couldn't even make it to the top of the hill. So we agreed to, to the hundred and fifty CCs.
I'd love to find it and follow through with an ordinance to, so it can go in the codebook. If you can approximate the time, I'll do more research. Phil, do you happen to have any paperwork of when we did that?
I do not, I don't even remember what time I came in to discuss that.
I don't remember it being on paper.
I thought it was just supposed to be changed and be put into the ordinance.
And see, that's a we don't remember either, but if you have any way you can figure out when it was you came before us for increasing?
Okay, I can look.
Yeah, I mean, are you still, are you gonna go back to forty-nines or?
I've still just got forty-nines. I've never even bumped up, because, you know, the problem was with people, you know, anything over, that displaced more than forty-nine CC, you have to have a motorcycle endorsement to ride, which really, so it didn't really even, I couldn't really, I had a couple bikes in there and was going to rent them, but I just, they just sit there, so. I still have them, and if somebody comes in, you know, and they got a motorcycle endorsement, but that's the problem, they just don't, you know. Usually if they do, they have a motorcycle to ride in.
Well, what you have are mopeds.
Yes, mopeds, forty-nine CC.
If I might, I know quite a bit about the moped franchises that were in the eighties and nineties, or actually in the nineties here.
Okay.
Because there were three franchises at one time. And the council at that time addressed the forty-nine CC and below, because of what Mr. McClung is saying, they're motorcycles above that point. And also because of the same point as they made, that the lower bikes have difficulty climbing the hills. That's why they were franchised in the, that time period, or at least one of the goals, because they slow traffic. Council franchised the issue so that there wouldn't be overabundance of mopeds everywhere in the city slowing the traffic, because they won't climb the hills at those lower CC bikes. So there was a lot, there was also a lot of difficulty in controlling them when they're at that lower speed going downhill, it's also. And that was addressed by the council back in the nineteen nineties. I was involved in quite a bit of the litigation that went on at that time over those bikes. Not a city attorney, but as a private attorney at the time.
So what, do we need to amend the moped ordinance to make it a hundred and fifty CCs or whatever?
Their goal at that time was that, that they're motorcycles above that and that the issue that they wanted to really control was not slowing traffic by having hundreds of these things at that time. Branson had several outlets, and they were slowing the traffic up there, even though they're not as hilly as we are here.
Well, that's clearly not what we think of as a motorcycle in this town.
Okay, then if we have a franchise for mopeds and we have a company that's operating motorcycles, do they not need some kind of a franchise permit or something for motorcycles? Is that something we need to deal with?
Motorcycles are more regulated on the same as rental cars.
Okay.
And we do not franchise car rentals. If you can show an issue, an issue of why you should franchise motorcycles, then that might be legitimate. But at this point, no, we do not regulate motorcycle rentals.
Okay, now, if another.
I know of no other city that does.
Okay, if another moped company comes into town, they have to come in and apply for a franchise.
They have to apply for a franchise.
Okay, if we do not have a number listed, do we need to address that?
At one time, I think there was a move to limit it to three franchises. If I, that is calling on my memory from eighteen, twenty years ago. I think the council at that time decided that they really needed to address the number of bikes more than they did the number of franchises.
So if one company had that number of bikes and nobody else could do it?
Well, that was.
Let's say it's twenty and one company does ten, another company can do ten. But if one does twenty, that means the second company can't come in?
Part of the issue was, we don't want too many bikes slowing down traffic.
Man, I wish I had that problem.
You don't anymore, but in the late nineties, mid nineties, there were a lot more of them here.
I, this town would support two different ones regardless, so. I mean, one of them would go out of business.
Give him a franchise?
Just to renew, renew his franchise.
The issue was the, I think the requirements in the city code state that he has to notify the council within a year, a year before he intends to renew his franchise.
A year?
And I don't think that was done.
Well, actually, the city notifies him.
Whatever it says.
Well, it says, notice the renewal of a franchise, franchise granted under this article shall be made public one year in advance of the expiration date. It really doesn't say who does the notifying.
Yeah, I wasn't aware I was supposed to.
The current franchisee must make a request to renew six months ahead of the expiration of the franchise date.
Well, those are the issues I was to bring up, they're brought up, and you have a, an application before you, so, Mr. Mitchell.
I make a motion that we pass this application for moped franchise for Mr. Philip Thomas, the owner of Blackjack Adventures.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Keep moping.
Okay, thanks.
And so far, no accidents, deaths, whatever.
That's great.
Moves us on to number five, Ms. Snyder's discussion of the energy meeting. Motion to discuss.
I don't think we should allow.
I don't think we should allow motorcycles to be rented in town. I'm sorry. No, I don't, I'm serious.
Why? Why?
Because we have no way of controlling who's renting them. I mean, that takes a special license, and it takes a training course.
Yeah, you don't get your license.
You have to have a motorcycle endorsement before you can ride.
Yeah, you have to.
They're regulating you anyway.
Okay, okay.
I'll, I'll second my motion.
We're, we're talking about the energy meeting report from Ms. Snyder.
I move the judge shuts up, anyway, second?
Say again.
Is there a second? Second on the discussion? All right, let's stick to business, last one, let's get it done.
Okay, geez, I just wanted to say that the, the renewable energy symposium was incredibly awesome, and this is something I've been trying to stay up to date on anyway, and I was really, really impressed, and we have an awesome area for solar, for wind, for everything. I, you know, on a personal level, I'm not talking to the big farms or anything, but the morning that I was leaving for it, I actually was informed of the, the new wind turbines that'll sit on your roof, they're like five-foot?
They're not allowed by city code.
No, 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 just wait, this is brand-new stuff, they aren't even done building it. It's like, the biggest one is five-foot, and it doesn't even make any noise, but this is where the future is coming for renewable energy, and it was fascinating. And what really, really got me, and blew my little mind, was in addition to all the talk about the solar and the wind power, was the talk about trail system. I was, I had no idea that Fayetteville has hooked up their trails from Fayetteville all the way through Rogers and to Bentonville. That's amazing, especially since we started trails, but it was, it was really, really fascinating, it's stuff y'all really need to be looking into, and it's stuff the city needs to start considering about using alternative energies to save taxpayer money. Something will probably be coming up, be coming up on the agenda in the future, but it was great, and if y'all ever get a chance to do one of these summer academies, you need to, it was worth it.
Any further? Okay, this is in the agenda setting, Mr. Vito?
Uh, no.
Mr. McCollum?
Nothing.
Mr. Mitchell?
Nothing, but I'm confused, I had this in my box, a resolution for amending the 2013 budget?
Yes.
We're not going to do that today?
I was going to get to that in my.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I should have addressed it earlier.
I have nothing, then.
Okay. Perkpot?
Nothing.
Ms. Snyder?
Um, nothing.
Miss Ellen?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, now, you have a packet in your, in your paperwork here, the, for the mid-year budget review, which was requested to be put on the next agenda for, for discussion. Lana couldn't be here tonight, so it was asked that it be put on.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, so.
Motion to, do we have to do a motion to put it on?
No.
I can put it on there.
That's right, never mind.
This, this, yes, sir.
I did, I did, you know, along with that, we do need to, to schedule, I know it's, it's a little early yet, but it's not for the mid-year budget review, that we need to do probably the first meeting in August, I suppose, because the June numbers won't come out until July.
This isn't, this isn't mid-year, this is.
Yeah, this is about mid-year, this is, yeah, yeah, what we got is just first quarter, as far as that goes.
It is.
Actually, the first.
Third.
Third, yeah, so.
Well, the numbers can be updated till the next, for the next meeting, too, it's just a matter of punching and man.
Well, that's, I'm talking, that's mid-year budget, not.
Whatever, whatever says.
This is, this is last year's.
Right, that's to wrap up your end.
Yeah.
That will be on the next agenda.
The resolution, yes. We have two things, resolution.
Yeah, two separate items.
Yes, we do.
All right, council comment, Mr. Vito?
Blues Festival starts Thursday night, got a good lineup with Chubby Carrier and Zytico Sound headlining it, I encourage everybody to tell your guests that there's good music in town at, at the hotels, the bars, the auditorium, and the weather looks accommodating for a change.
Mr. McCollum?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
You said, you shouldn't have said that.
Yeah, 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 we have an implo festival.
Yes, I'd like to take this, take a moment to thank all of the members that served on the noise committee. I, I think it was a, an excellent opportunity for a diverse group of citizens and, and a council member to meet on a topic that was pertinent and of, of interest to a lot of people in this town. We put a lot of time and effort into it. It, I want to reemphasize again that it was a noise ordinance in general, it did not target any particular segment, I, I'm, it's like a broken record, but I keep saying it because I don't want the work of that committee to be hijacked by somebody who has a specific agenda against one targeted population, because that's not what we did. But we put a lot of effort in, the council, in its infinite wisdom, has passed that or, that amen, that ordinance to be added to the other one, it's certainly appreciated. Steve Beecham did a tremendous amount of work on this, keeping up with minutes and kept things going, as all the other committee members that I've mentioned in the past. So the noise ordinance is now passed, so it goes into the next phase, which is enforcement. And enforcement obviously rests with the, with the police department, because it is in their infinite wisdom and in their judgment when somebody is violating the noise ordinance, and it is also in their purview to write, should it get to that point, the particular citation that would go with it. After that, there was one element that the noise committee did discuss, but the purview of implementation of that belongs with the mayor, and that is any appropriate signage. We did recommend, and will send a letter to the mayor, recommending that at the entrances of all the major entrances into the city, that, that the appropriate sign be posted, definitely take down the ride quiet if there's any of those left, because those, those are not appropriate for what we're going for, but put up noise ordinance enforced, possibly at the top of Planner Hill, possibly at the point where Spring Street separates from North Main, noise ordinance strictly enforced. I think a lot of people catch those, read them, and I honestly think they do pay attention, and I think it helps, I don't think those are offensive, but we will be sending a letter because the, again, the issue of signage rests under the mayor and the director of public works. But again, a thanks to the noise committee, and that's it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Perkpot?
None, thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Am I last? Put me last.
Ms. Snyder, go ahead.
Okay.
Miss Ellen, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Ms. Snyder?
Okay, tomorrow is the runoff election, anybody who voted a Democratic ballot will not be eligible to vote, this is a Republican runoff, anybody who voted a Republican ballot or a nonpartisan judicial ballot, or did not vote at all, on May twentieth, you may all vote tomorrow, seven-thirty to seven-thirty, all your normal, usual places for primary and general election. Okay, now I have to, excuse me, bring up an unhappy, an unhappy topic. All of you know Sue Glave and what she has done for our community, especially in regards to the Veterans Parade that she and I have been doing together for five or six years now. Last year, she, at the last minute, organized one of our first July fourth parades. I'm sorry, she has suffered a sudden, unexpected heart attack, was rushed to Little Rock to the heart surgeon where she was being tested for a valve transplant. She has had the transplant, she is still in the hospital, she is very, very slowly coming around. She's alive, but we don't know at what point her brain is at. In view of that, and the moving she was doing from her house to her new house, she had the heart attack before she got the box of information to me in regards to July fourth. So I'm sorry to announce, there will be no July fourth parade this year, I have no idea where to start, she wasn't even sure where the box was in the moving, and now there's no way anybody can talk to her about it, so I'm sorry, there will be no July fourth parade this year, next year, we will do it up gangbusters. Please pray for her. She has done so much, I'm sorry. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, brings us to me, they're getting prayers and best wishes to Ms. Sue Glave, who's one of our icons in the community as far as activities concerning veterans. If anybody has any, anything they want to say, we'll, we'll run it through the mayor's office and try to get it to her, we don't know what conditions he's in, so, we'll, we'll go accordingly. Let me hit the activities for this year, or for this coming up month. June the eleventh is the Trails Workshop in the council room, what time?
Ten.
Ten o'clock, okay. I will not be here. Ten AM, sorry. June the fourteenth, and I'm really proud to announce this one, is the Flag Day dedication at two PM of the new Planner Hill flagpole in the transit parking lot, it looks very, very good, and it is lit, and it will be lit for display at night. June the twelfth to the fifteenth, Blues Weekend, June the fourteenth is the Second Saturday Music in the Park, June the fourteenth is the Second Saturday Gallery Stroll, June the fifteenth is Happy Father's Day, June the fifteenth is Father's Day Blues Picnic at Turpentine Creek, June the fifteenth, Opera in the Ozarks at the Auditorium at two PM, June the twentieth is Opera in the Ozarks Season Begins, June the twenty-first, Yellow Jackets at the Auditorium at eight PM, June the twenty-second, Opera in the Ozarks at the Auditorium, two PM, June the twenty-second, Eureka Movie Classic Night at the Auditorium, seven PM, My Fair Lady will be the presentation. I just want to make one comment regarding the motorcycles, okay. Just so everybody knows, that the state of Arkansas has started to push on motorcycle tourism at the request of, of residents in the United States and in Canada, and probably some from overseas that want to come over here and rent a bike and go ride. They have kind of made Eureka Springs the hub of the motorcycle tourism push, through the fact that everybody comes here anyway, whether they're invited or not. The state has, let me just throw out a few numbers here for you real quick, the state spent a hundred and eleven thousand dollars on their push this year, in the last two years, we have spent approximately twenty-five thousand dollars combined, last year and this year, and some people will think that's too much, and that's okay. The city of Harrison has spent a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars last year to get the bike traffic to come to their city, not run them off, noisy or not, and, and that's their prerogative. I just want to say, in, in defense of my role as the mayor, that I invite all motorcycle tourism, not just the loud, noisy ones who people think that I invite them to come here and just cause havoc, and that's just not true. Motorcycle tourism will increase in the city of Eureka Springs and in the state of Arkansas, whether you like it or not, I have no say-so over it, the state of Arkansas has no say-so over it, it's the tourists and the riders who has the say-so over it, because they live Eureka Springs and they want to come here. Granted, we just passed a noise ordinance, which will be complied with, citations will be issued for any violations thereof, but they always have been, regardless of what people think. We wrote more tickets last year in our complete year than you, than Fayetteville wrote the entire Bikes, Blues, and Barbecue event, just, just for some numbers. We have a motorcycle resort going in north of town at the Missouri Line called Williams Biker Resort. Apparently, the gentleman came in from Minnesota, decided he wanted to buy a motel, and he didn't buy the motel, that fell through, so he's building his own up on Twenty-three North, right at the Missouri Line, will be a, a big business addition to Carroll County and Eureka Springs. We have to try to look at this thing in a positive aspect, and there, granted, there is a section of people in town that just don't like the motorcycles because of the noise. I want to make a point very clear, I don't like the loud noise of motorcycles. When I was an officer, we, we, we stopped these guys because they're, they're breaking the law. They will be continued to be issued citations, whether it be a warning or a hard copy, but that's at the discretion of the officer and, and the attitude of the rider, so, and Mr. Mitchell and all the guys on the, the noise committee understood that from Mr. Frost being on that committee, I'm sure he made it very clear as to what can and will happen. Apparently, there's been motorcycles here since nineteen oh four, when the gentleman who was, played last year in the, I can't remember his name right now, in, in the Voices of the Silent City, he brought the first Harley-Davidson to Eureka Springs, and they've been coming ever since, and they'll keep coming, but not just the Harley-Davidsons, it's, it's the Hondas and the Kawasaki's and the Yamahas and, and all the other bikes that don't make noise, so you can't put them all in one bag. Yes, sir. Pardon mark, that's correct. Yes, thank you. So, I just want to make that very clear, and, and I'm not defending bad acts by anybody that will be dealt with. In fact, I'm fixing to go to a motorcycle event in South Pottery Island, and I'm taking my truck. So, yay, South Pod ready, they want to hear my bike, okay. Motion to adjourn?
The motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
Aye.